I do have to dabble if I need to use it. I do have to dabble if I need to use it. Okay, um, we're called this meeting at seven forty apologies to the delay of the previous meeting. For agenda review, review.
Just in my background.
We do have a need for a non-public tonight. We may have an additional need for reason that we will get to when we get there. Does anyone have anything they wish to add or subtract to the agenda apart from that? If folks here for hockey, this is a separate thing. So we know you're coming. Anyone else from board members? Okay, seeing right along, seeing that, I can then move right along to published comments. Hope may address the board on anything not already on the agenda. If you're wondering, guess this is the time for hockey. Just out of curiosity and people in the audience, is anyone here for an issue other than hockey? Okay, seeing, you can see there are a lot of you. We appreciate that. We love that you're here. That said, we want to keep this somewhat efficient. I hope that people looked at our policy on public comment. I'm assuming very few of you have, so I'm going to quick summary. Keep it clean. You have to say your name, the town you're living in, and if you are representing any particular group. And you have three minutes. I will be timing you for this efficiency. Try not to be redundant. If someone has already said exactly what you want to say, please feel free to say it. I support the previous comment and leave it at that. That said, if you there's something new you want to talk about that we have not heard from yet, I encourage you to speak your mind. Any clarifying questions on the administrative side of things? Okay, and also if you wish to speak, you got to stand kind of right in the middle so the cameras can get you. And yeah, so name hometown if you are representing a particular group. Would you like to speak?
For hockey?
What's that?
For anything you would like to.
Anything. We are expecting hockey, but we don't necessarily know which way to go. Which leads me to my final point. Do not necessarily look for an answer from us tonight. We don't know what you're about to say. We may have to do a deep dive into research and defining numbers and finding costs. So we want to hear what you have to say, but don't necessarily look for a response from us.
Um, I do have this on my phone, so if I'm looking down at my phone. Want to seem like a jerk. Um, so.
Your name first.
Yeah. My name is Henry Dinsmore. I am fifteen years old. I am from North Vermont. I'm representing the um boys who be eligible and willing to play on a JV team that could potentially be fielded for Hanover. Um, I've played hockey, club hockey since age seven. Hockey is my favorite sport. Loved my whole life, grew up in a hockey town. Um, yeah. Uh, last year I played with fourteen U Bantam Hockey with Hanover Hockey Association. And I now made jod of that, obviously, and now I'm now I would now the obvious next step for me would be to play on an HHS varsity junior varsity team. Likely a junior varsity team, very talented varsity team, but uh we currently do not have a junior varsity team JV. And um basically, yeah, that's like, I'm saying we should come and field that JV team to support development. Like, we already have a great varsity program, but to continue to be able to field good players. We should continue to develop players in the Hanover High School system. So it's like easier to adapt to new coaching and like different like and they don't have to adapt to different like ideas and like things when they move to HHS. Um, like this is not just like an investment in like the people playing now. This would be very much for the people like five, ten years down the line. Like I have a younger brother right now who's playing with Hanover Hockey Association. It is very likely he in six years down the line is going to be coming here and looking for a spot on a Hanover team. And it is likely that he would be looking for a spot on the JV team. And that's like one of the reasons I'm up here because I want him to be able to continue to play hockey because I know he loves it. Uh, yeah, um. And like we also, we do have a very large number of players. Very skilled people who are willing to come here and play and getting people to play would likely not be a problem. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Like, is there anything you want to ask me?
Or remember send any comments on this? Anyone else just speak? Go ahead.
Hello, resident school board. My name is Liam Herrick and I am from Hanover and I am representing the student athletes that play sports here at the high school and in the middle school. I play in hockey. I've been playing hockey in Hanover for a while since I was four years old. And this past year I was the co-captain of the fourteen U Wild State Championship winning team. Hockey has been a part of my life for as long as I can remember. Uh, but due to the options for hockey in the Upper Valley, we've had a JV team in Hanover. The options to continue to play the sport I love are very limited. With the exceptional um athletes and demand for athletics in this district, making a varsity team for any sport, hockey, soccer, lacrosse, etc., is hard for any freshman. While unlike soccer and lacrosse, hockey does not have a JV team to let athletes current to let athletes continue to develop the sport and then move on to varsity in the future if they'd like. With uh Hanover High School's current hockey offered, many student athletes are left with nowhere to play until they can make a varsity team, which becomes increasingly more difficult as they do not have an infinite season opportunities to further develop this skill. This dynamic forces dedicated and talented hockey players to abandon the sport. Hanover has always been very successful in hockey and I can and can be very successful in the JV league out of tri-town. Given the current number of young hockey players in this district, there will be a demand for a JV team for years to come. Uh, as a USA hockey referee who has officiated local games and as a volunteer coach from a little brother's team, I can confidently say that through Hanover Wild alone, not counting other clubs in this district, there's a demand to play hockey. Offering an option for a JV team at Hanover High School will benefit both current and future student athletes and will help the hockey program as a whole. So I ask that you strongly think about the amount of student athletes that a JV program will benefit, not just next year, but for years to come. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Go for it. Um, I'm Errol Moore. I'm an actor at Hanover High School and I'm from Norwich, Vermont. Um, I've been playing hockey since I was three years old. Um, I played on the same team uh for two years as the two people that previously spoke and I support their two messages.
Hi, I'm Howie Warren. I'm fourteen years old and I live in Etna, New Hampshire. Um. I don't, uh, I just aged out of um youth hockey and I don't know what I would do next year because I don't think I would make the varsity team and a JV team would be very nice.
And I'm assuming we have parents up here. We're welcome to you guys as well.
Um, my name is Kim Dovin. I am Henry's mother. I also have two other sons. He mentioned a younger son who also plays hockey and is um ten year old right now. And I do support this message. I think it's important to allow these boys to continue to grow and develop their self. JV team here at Hanover High. We need the people to support that team coming up and develop over time and feed into that team. And that team needs their backup support in the JV team as well, I think. So we would really appreciate it if the board um would help us work with the athletic department to um develop the JV team again here at Hanover. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Anna. Anna Dotchman Taylor, the North Vermont parent. And um I used to have to supervise a big team and look at a lot of resumes for people applying for jobs. And I could tell you from looking at a lot of resumes that candidates who played a team sport are incredible at being workers. They can manage their time. They know how to work together. They know how to cooperate. There's so many real life skills that happen from being on a team. And so I would like to support and advocate for any opportunity for students to be able to be part of a team. And I think it's really important to have this JV opportunity. Thank you.
Also know we have several members with us virtually. If you wish to speak, please raise your Zoom hand and we will get to you as well. Anyone else in person? Uh, Michael, board member.
I I just wanted to, for people that don't know, I also serve as the president of the Hanover Hockey Association. And I just wanted to say how much I appreciate um people coming and talking about this today. I happen to think that hockey is a wonderful team sport and it builds a lot of teamwork and confidence, which you saw on display tonight when the boys um spoke before the school board. And the Hanover Hockey Association is not in a position to offer a junior varsity hockey team. It is not. We do. However, we would be supportive of those efforts. If there are other ways that the school district believes they could partner with HHA, we are all ears and would be happy to talk with the athletic department or coaches and see how we can be helpful. We're just simply not in a position to offer a uh full-time sixteen U team that would stand in the shoes of a junior varsity team. And I'm very sensitive to what the boys are saying, that it's very hard to ask fourteen year olds to go compete with seventeen and eighteen year olds on the ice without more time in training um after middle school. So anyways, that's a long way of saying thank you and we want to help and we're all ears if the school district wants to engage in that conversation.
Michael, just to confirm, you're speaking with your non-board member hat on or with your board member?
I'm speaking as a member of the public who is also a Zoom panelist and part of the school board, but yes, I'm primarily wearing my Hanover Hockey and Norwich Resident hat.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Um, just that context, he is also a school board member who typically would be sitting here except that he's virtual tonight. I see Kelly and I see another board member online. Any other comments from the public in the public comment section related to hockey? Please go ahead.
Um, hi, my name's Eunice Wharton. I live in Etna. Um. How is mom? Um, I wanted to add that we are really hoping to advocate for a JV hockey team at the high school. Um. I don't really know a lot about hockey. I'm like figuring this out as they go along. Uh, and apparently it's a big deal to have full ice practices versus half ice practices. And one of the things that has been discussed is that as a JV team at the high school, it would be an opportunity to have full ice practices. I don't even, I mean, I can understand sort of why that's a big deal, but I think that is a big deal to these players. Um, also, Hanover High School is the only um hockey team that competes in Division One in New Hampshire and does not have a JV team. So I think that both for um access to the sport, for equity, for opportunity to keep playing, for kid, for the parents who have to live with kids who love hockey and um and I don't know, it's just, it's just a lot. Um. Yeah, I'm hoping that you will consider bringing back a JV team at the high school and um I think that financially the community will support it. Um. And I I don't know how much detail to say, but yeah.
Any other comments from members of the public? I know the board is eager to have our own discussion. It sounds like. Thank you, Eunice.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any comments from the public? Okay, so I saw at least three board members. We may have either comments for the public, you're under obligation to answer them, or discussion among yourselves. Um, I'm going to start with Garrett, who is also with us virtually. Garrett, go ahead. This is another.
Sorry, just got unmuted. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, I know that this isn't really supposed to be interactive, but I think just as a board member speaking and if someone on in the audience wants to stand up and ask a question, I actually admittedly am surprised that we don't have a JV, given the fact that you're right, that as I understand it, the varsity is D one, which is unusual, as we all know, for Little Hanover High School. And is there a reason why? Is it cost? Is it ice time? Have his parents already approached me and had this discussion and now they're here asking for the board to view this? I guess try to make this a little bit interactive as far as like what is the problem and why is everyone like coming to the board to ask for action? Have we not had movement from others? I don't really know what the, like, why we don't have a JV and kind of what the problem is that we're trying to solve is the board.
So thank you for that, Garrett. I will note in terms when you mentioned interactiveness that
Yeah.
this working board meeting is not intended to a conversation, just making that clear. We have heard your stuff. It sounds like we have some work we need to gather information, need to gather internally. We may have questions for you and there might be a little back and forth. That's not really the intent of this meeting. The full-blown black back and forth, excuse me, would be something called a forum, which we do offer at some of these, for example, the RMS had a math forum a few months ago. That would be more of like the community and or back and forth. And I also did want to note that Megan Sobel is with us online virtually and she has a comment. So pardon me, board members, I think we should hear from her before we have a discussion. Um, can you move Megan over to the van? All right, Megan, go for it when you're ready. This is our athletic director, for those who don't know.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I I just wanted to provide a clarification. I understand that um you know, there are lots of questions and I'm hearing from you. This is not probably the time to answer those, but I just wanted to clarify one thing that I thought I heard was that we're the only Division One school um in New Hampshire without JV hockey. That is not accurate. Um, there's fifteen schools in D one, um, and seven of those have JV hockey currently. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that. Um, we are by far the smallest school. We petitioned up to D one. So many of those schools um you know, are between fifteen hundred and three thousand students. Um, when we're about six eighty or so. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that. I'm happy to talk more if this is the right time, but um I just wanted to provide a clarification.
Megan, uh, board member, starting with Kelly.
So a couple more. First, um, full disclosure, I'm also on the Hanover Hockey Board. Um, I I I'm the parent manager, manager on the uh Hanover Hockey Board. Um. I am not advocating one way or the other, but I did want to provide a little more information for the board. Um, Liam mentioned the fact that these kids don't have anywhere else to play after they age out of U fourteen. And I just wanted to clarify for the board that for some of those kids, that happens at the end of eighth grade. Um, this year there were, I want to say, four or five kids who were cut, yeah, from the varsity team. All of those kids were able to play U fourteen where there is a good local option for them to play club hockey. My child was not able to do that because he has an November birthday. There were other kids. They were given a spot on varsity team because the numbers worked out that way. Um, I know for the summer fall hockey program coming up, there are thirty-seven boys signed up. So that is an extraordinarily large number compared to many years. And I'm sure that's something Megan would share. I don't know what the board does with that. So I wanted to give that information. That's not often the case. That is definitely enough for two teams. We don't always have thirty-seven kids. So I wanted to kind of provide um that context and then just to say I know that the parents have been in touch with the athletic department, you know, that was my final comment. Um, so I do think there's probably more for us to find out in terms of costs, in terms of conversations that have happened. I don't think tonight's probably the time for that, but I also think it probably needs to happen quickly if we are going to find out more. So again, not advocating for anything, just playing out more information. And thank you to the boys who spoke. I know that's not easy to do. So thank you.
Lisa.
Yeah, um, I have an answer to, I think it was Garrett's question about like why there is, my understanding of why there is no longer a JV team and it has to do with numbers. And full disclosure, I am the mom of two boys who played hockey all the way through their senior years at Hanover High. Um, and my son was part of the last JV team, which won the state championship. Um, so even though they were a smaller school, we do, we still were able to compete on the JV level there. But it, um, the numbers just fell off, like whether it was like a lack of interest for hockey or whether the the COVID, the birth year, you know, like it was a year that not many kids were born in two thousand and six and two thousand and seven or whatever those years would have been. Um, there just weren't numbers to support a JV team. And so the decision was made, it's my understanding, that we couldn't support it. There just weren't enough players. You couldn't have too many swing players from varsity going down to JV. It's not legal. It also puts the kids under stress of for injuries and those sorts of things. So um it it really, at the time that it was like, oh, it's my understanding, it was a numbers game. I don't know what that means now that there's back up to thirty-seven. Um, there are costs obviously associated with this, so I know this isn't the time for that, but I just wanted to provide a little bit of context that we did have a JV team and that it's my understanding that the tri-town league for JV still exists. And so the JV teams play every Sunday night in one of three slots. And um and then one of the expenses for that used to be that Hanover would provide a bus of transportation down to those games. But it was just one night a week. That's when the JV played and then they had um separate practices, um, often with not great ice time, but they did get full ice periodically. So thank you.
Any other comments from board members or administrators? Any added context? And thank you for coming. You are welcome to stay, but the rest of the meeting is a public meeting. You probably don't want to. You're welcome to.
Oh, you want to hear the Hanover, the high school council representative?
So in that case, we will move on to the end of the public comment. There is an additional public comment at the very end of our meeting, which may not be for a couple hours. And we will move on. Right, starting with your fourth, I move on to the board of the high school, Hanover High School Council rep, probably doing tonight.
Good, how are you?
Want to watch, see what's going on?
So um, it's been a while since I was here because the last meeting was over March intensive, so I have a couple of things to go over. Um. First, council had an election to replace our representatives on programming and procedure. Um, we had our representative Owen Welch stepped down and we elected Matilda Monroe, who's a senior, and she'll be taking over the seat. Uh, we've also allocated money for Spring Carnival, which is happening next Friday, as well as a hundred dollars to the mock trial team uh who recently won the state championship and is going to nationals in two weeks in Arizona. Um, and that that helped. I'm part of the team that helped us get over our fifteen thousand dollar goal, uh, which is what we had to raise to pay for transport, lodging in Arizona, because we don't, we don't, unfortunately, don't get funding from the school because it's not a sport. Um. Our most recent big motion that we discussed is called the Actions of Trump Disavow Motion was brought to the body by Mr. Murphy, who's a social studies teacher at Hanover. And I'll just read um, I'll read the intent statement just for context. Um. Says, I move that the council of Hanover High School disavow the actions President Donald J. Trump when he bullies other nations and peoples, when he disregards the rule of law and the Constitution of the United States of America, when he avoids the threat of global warming, and when he ignores the plight of the poor and less privileged in the United States and in the world. So uh, there's more to it, but that's just the um intent statement. Um, there was a lengthy discussion that stuck like over a month. Um. There were some concerns shared about whether it was council's, it was council's role to take these like broad political statements, um, whether that somehow excluded members of the high school community who might not disagree with this motion. Eventually, we decided to refer it to the Examining Equity Committee with the goal of changing the language to make it more specific to Hanover High School students and how we are defending Hanover High School students in this way rather than a broader political statement. and how we, uh, defending Hannover High School students in this way, rather than a broader political statement. So, uh, hopefully this motion will be dropped back with a new language in the future. So I'll, I'll let the board know when that's coming. If you guys want to come join and listen to that conversation.
Any questions for Ella, from board members or the public? Thank you, Ella. Move very long on to the High School Principals Report. Julie, want to come up and tell us what's going on in your role?
So there's a bunch of stuff in here. I don't know if you wanted to ask about any of it. Niask, I'll send you the report when it comes in, so you'll have the report the way they wrote it. I just tried to remember from my notes what some of the stuff that they said. And sectioning, you can see, there was, I talked to Robin a little bit, because we have the merge of a class that I wrote about, and whether that was something that was new that we're supposed to bring to the board or not. Her advice was just to update you on it, because it's not adding anything new. It's just because of moving parts, number of kids who sign up, all that. So it's like the merge together of two things. So, um, they're still going to be prepared for the next step after those two classes. I don't know if anyone has a question.
It is a great question. I would ask to us to sort of, how do we as a board feel like? Is that a substantial critical change? These would be the critical discussion we had about a month or two ago adapting, where we adapted the policy. Basically, us, the authority for major changes as brought forth by administrators. Everyone having, anyone having strong feelings on that one way or the other, would this count in this example?
I would say no, simply because the content is the same as previous courses. It's just the delivery is. Well, it, it's doing this, which is what actually Niask wants us to do more of, which is wrapping together a couple of courses, rather than doing everything as singletons.
Did she just mention, yeah? I think I just heard you say that word.
I did. And I didn't get itchy. It's over. Anyway, that's my two cents.
Any other comments on the critical question from anyone?
I mean, as a newer board member, it seems like an interesting pilot, and I was more curious after I read this to hear more from the math findings report. Because to me, this is an interesting opportunity to build math and science and algebra. That's it. So I thought it, I'm a design thinker, and I think that's super cool, that we're trying something new. And like, maybe how will we measure if this is something that works well or not? That would be my question.
So we, the math coordinator was the one when we were doing sectioning that brought it up. And then, you know, usually things work really slowly, so sort of was like, bring it up, and then maybe we'll do it a year and a half from now. And then it, the, the idea, then I brought it up to the science coordinator when we were doing sectioning. And then everyone kind of thought it was the thing to do, and so then it's like, why are we waiting? Because this could be good for these kids next year. So, so that was that. Uh, but then we did have a conversation, because there are a few things, like we did bio. Um, the, the, uh, general level bio merged last year into bio, so there's only two levels of bio now instead of one. And so I was meeting with the
Why we shouldn't have JV hockey?
Well, you're not muted.
So then the, um, what we, we decided to, we decided to do it, but we also talked about, you know, how are those bio kids doing, right? Like, how did that happen? You know, because we thought it would be better for those kids who often travel together in the school building to, to merge. But are they actually really successful? So then we talked about how on this one, we really have to track those kids as they go into bio and ALG, that, that we feel like they're better prepared, or it's at least even, but we'd rather it be better. So, yeah, we, we were talking about how we're gonna to evaluate the whole thing.
Any other questions for Julie from board members, from the public? Yes. New board member, Renee Sol.
Yes. I, I love math and science. Um, and the idea of Math Lab is really cool, and I want to sign up. Just thinking about like measuring success, if we think about, okay, great, the end is important to measure, but also like if you notice things are not going well early on, like what have you thought through, like what you'd want to see in like November or January, whatever it is? And like how you might pivot if you don't see like you're on track for success?
Right.
What that might.
I think we've been talking a little bit with especially the math side of it, in terms of what bars they need to meet as they get there and, and what we will do. So we've got to sort that before the year ends, so that we're ready to go. Right now, they're trying to figure out, there are two teachers that want to do it together, but are those the right two teachers?
Yes.
Right? And so it's trying to figure that out. So we're still sorting that piece of it.
As someone who's spent almost thirty years team teaching, if they want to do it, they're the right teachers.
Any other comments for Julie? Julie, does that satisfy your question, your comment about the criticism?
Yeah, I mean, I think with those that we think are maybe on the line or something, well, I'll just keep putting them in the reports, right? If, you know, check with Robin first, then make sure you're aware, right? And we'll just sort of work our way through this to try to figure out what actually is substantial versus mini, right?
I, I just want to make sure that we get the sequence and the timing, right? Because by the time it ends up in a principal's report, is that decision's been made and it's already there? Like, if you're looking for, if, if the board wants to approve these things, and I think we need to
See it before.
Yeah, we want it earlier in the process, not at the end.
And the intended protocol, I think, was if you had, if you or someone under staff had an idea, they bring it to you, you bring it to Robin, she brings it to Jay, and then you or Jay bring it at the next board meeting to us as deemed appropriate.
Yeah.
I think if, that this particular need developed as a result of sectioning and trying to figure out bodies and numbers of students.
Right.
So that, that would push a combination course closer to the end of the year. And I don't really know how you alert, when do you do the section?
I think if Robin had, I'm just thinking if Robin had said to me, so when we did the sections was two weeks ago, right? So the whole thing kind of, then I ended up in three different meetings to try to, can, can we move this fast? Can we really do this? Do we think we could do it? So it was, it hasn't been that long. Um, but I, that's why I asked Robin to make sure, because if Robin at that point had said, stop, sign, I would have said to everyone, we're just keeping the classes separate, and we won't do that, we won't do this idea next year. So, so that was my initial sort of check with Robin, but then that's Robin, not you. Right? So, yeah, so let's go away, we through this.
And I think that is the protocol. Like, you, you consulted with Robin, she decided didn't need to go to the board. In this particular case, um, I, I think you wouldn't have just had to scrap it. I think if she had said, yeah, it is go to the board, we still could have.
Right, we could have tried, we were running the schedule, but we would have then hand put it in later, I guess, right? We're trying to run that, the schedule, because it takes about a month for us to sort of build and then load and then work out the bugs. So, um, yeah, but we could also have just separated it and then said later, okay, we, it's been approved. We'll, we'll put them in and make sure all the kids can get to that period, yeah. Because they would have been what, the sad part about it, I guess, is they would have been traveling together anyway, right? So they both, they all would have had the same periods off together, because they're, they've traveled throughout the building, which is what tends to happen. Which tends to happen with singletons, right? It's like a, a, a tracking that wasn't meant to be, that just sort of kind of happens, yeah. So we probably could have then merged it, because they would have all been there anyway.
You have a general follow-up?
Um, no, I, I, I mean, yeah, sure, yes. So, I mean, I think to the extent that what was put before the board tonight was, was our decision on how to handle these things articulated sufficiently enough, did they interpret it correctly this time, right? I still rely on the process, whereas the administration reviews things that they're like, no, this one needs to go before the board. Then it goes before the board, and I think tonight maybe was just one of those things like, did we get that right?
Yeah.
And I think the answer is yes, at least from my perspective. And going forward, we just rely on the administration saying, hold up, this one looks bigger than, you know, what we thought. Let's bring it to the board, not let's run this one by the board every single time. Do you want to see it? Do you not want to see it? That's not where I want to, where this body, I think, should be playing.
So I think what happened was correct. You brought it to Robin, Robin, okay, and now you're just letting us know it's part of the principal's report.
Yeah.
Which is fine, we like hearing reports. But sort of, yes, process-wise, this happened as intended, and that was just sort of the first trial run in terms of do we, do you give updates or not? Because this is more
Right.
Here's that update for you.
Right.
Which is fine, I like to hear these updates, because we don't necessarily have to comment on them.
Right. And the new courses mainly you guys are all going to see in December, January meeting, right? Because those are the ones, that's when we do that piece.
So January for the twenties.
The merging, right, the merging would be now. And but the merging piece, you know, I'll, I'll just keep checking in with superintendent. And then, you know, if it seems like a too big of a merge, then we'll just hold off for a year and a half, or, right? We'll, we'll figure that out, yeah.
Any other questions for Julie on anything? Thank you, Julie.
All right, thanks.
All right. Hey, you want to come on up? And, uh, note folks that the math, the math discussion is a separate item on the list. This is the other principals.
This is all the fun pictures and stuff. Um, so we, uh, had quite a bit that has been going on. This is where, um, yeah, the year seems to really pick up speed. So I didn't know if anybody had any questions or sort of what was going on. We had two, a lot of really cool things that happened, including we're continuing to look to try to find ways that we can, uh, interact between schools, between RMS and RAY, between RMS and MCS, so that we can sort of build those community links. So it's not, we're not seen as all separate schools. Uh, we did send our robotics team to Houston. They had an absolutely fantastic time. They, um, as usual, they, uh, a lot of the stories that they tell had very little to do with the competition. That was a lot of fun. It did have, uh, did I put that picture in here? Yeah, that's, so that's our group. Their project was a way to try to increase range for unmanned underwater vehicles. So they had a whole mock-up, obviously, they didn't build the whole thing, but they got to meet, um, the people from the Navy who were there with their actual unmanned underwater vehicles. So that was kind of a cool experience. And then the other thing is that we just recently learned that Greg Stott, who had won the McCullough award, so he was on sabbatical last year, um, won the award for the Northeast Section Geo Science Teacher of the Year. With that, that organization. So he's a very, uh, humble guy, sort of, just sent like a little wink. I was like, you probably need to talk more about this. He's like, nah. Yeah, so if anybody has any other questions about all those things.
Any questions for Tim, specific to the principal's report? Seeing none, thank you, Tim, don't go too far.
No, I, I don't know how, how far we're gonna be.
Right, moving on to the tuition rate. Do we have a commission, the tuition committee member who's given up in August, or is it a, Teresa?
I can do it.
All right, thank you, Teresa. You want to come on up?
And then they can join in us. So the committee met recently to try to determine the tuition rate for the Dresden School District, and then also, um, piggyback with RMS. We're looking at the method of how it's been done in the past, I guess, for at least ten years or more. It's been sort of done the same way, using a spreadsheet, um, plugging in the numbers and calculating. And the process that we were using was using like, if I use real time to determine the FY twenty-six tuition, we'd be using FY twenty-four, um, expenditure data. So using that, we're already like a year behind lag. So by calculating that over the time, um, I think this year we, uh, really saw, um, with the fluctuation in students, where our tuition rate seemed to go, appeared to go down quite a bit from what it was. And so obviously, not really keeping up with time, not the reality of what's going to come forward, because our projected tuition or expenditure cost for FY twenty-six. They, they're not keeping pace with each other. So we were looking at one of the methods to use where Vermont, where we do have about forty-five Vermont students that come. Um, we have from line, a little more than seventy students and everything else. But the tuition formula that Vermont uses, they use current, so we'd be using the current data and the projected FY twenty-six rev, uh, expenditure and revenues as an offset. That with our student count is going to give us somewhere accurate. Um, it's kind of using the same offsets that the formula that we used with the spreadsheet didn't take into account any, um, incoming revenues. So we didn't use any offsetting revenues. The Vermont formula calculation uses those, which we do have some. Calculating both of them, when one came out like twenty-four thousand, the old method came out twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and forget the number offhand, but a little over twenty-four thousand, seven hundred. And then using the new Vermont method, which is very straightforward, and I know it's attached. You'll see the formula here. It's a very easy calculation. We had to stand and explain it. You could, the other method sort of took some of your expenditures and your capital outlays and everything else, and they kind of broke it down, and then you had to add things in, take things out. So it was kind of complicated, um, say the least. So this method of using the new method, um, our rate came out twenty-five thousand, four seventy. Give or take about a three hundred dollar difference. But it's keeping pace. The projected, using the old formula, whenever that, when that was calculated, the anticipated at that point, or the, what the known cost was per pupil was like a little over twenty-two thousand dollars. Obviously, again, as I said, not keeping pace with what the reality is and what student, um, cost per pupil. So using the Vermont method is the one that I'm trying to initiate, that we moved to that method. We use the same exercise for the RMS, but because RMS doesn't really have revenues to offset, using the old method made sense for that one. Also, using the newer method meant using newer, using the projected, um, cost and everything else. We've got, uh, we just had the Warren Arco for athletics, for putting that and everything else. But so without any offsetting revenue, which we won't have, it was going to cost like thirty thousand dollars for a student for RMS. Using the old method puts it back in perspective. And my number is twenty-four thousand, nine, ten. Um, so it kind of puts it back in perspective. I think we have one student right now that, for RMS, that it would really affect. Um, the high school number was the more critical.
Or do you have immediate comment?
Um, what we were just all trying to accomplish, I think, maybe with, and Kelly Robert from the committee as well, is to try and come up with a formula that's functional and somewhat predictable and standardized. And I will just sort of characterize as the previous Hannover High School tuition formula as pretty darn funky. Didn't make a lot of sense, and it would have resulted this year in tuition going down a thousand dollars approximately over last year, which makes no sense, because expenses are actually increasing. So that was the tipping point that we said, we must investigate the methodology behind this and have some goals toward, um, more standardized, more predictable, and something that really reflects more costs, our costs to the district. So we don't have a perfect solution, I don't think, right now. I think this is a process that's going to take multiple years. So, um, because we need to gather more data, and we need to evaluate these new formula options over time, especially in the political landscape that has lots of changes coming on both sides of, of the river for us. So what we had decided was, we liked this Vermont formula. We also liked the actual expense formula. They were both pretty much the same, like the week ago, last time we met. And then there was a, a slight change made to, um, some of the input data from our uniforms. And then there's like effectively like a three hundred dollar difference now, and they were virtually the same. About like twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and change. I liked that number. That number is sort of I liked that number, that number is sort of more reflective of our costs. And it could, it, it makes sense, um, it would make sense. The old formula has got to go. I think, uh, what we do is we pick a number that's really close to this twenty four thousand seven hundred number. Um, because that's. Clear, I mean, and I think Jay's had some conversation, we've all had some conversations about this. And I think it's a lot of consensus building and there is a little bit of a bump in the road, I'll just tell you, and I'll be quick. Um, because the old formula is so funky and people saw other towns. Then schools saw our budget draft documents. What the number would have resulted in, which was a decrease from last year in tuition, there will be some sticker shock as we transition. But my understanding is when Jamie did the, um, sort of notification to towns as to where we were in the budget process. And the calculation, she included a disclaimer that said, hey. Quite possible that this calculation is going to change, so like not to hang your hat on it too much. So I think we're okay, then if you guys have other, you know, things to add or if I got something wrong, please. Um, those at the meeting, feel free to chime in.
So do you appreciate it?
Yeah, I, I think there is some information you can see on there, on the. Um, we are talking about ways of sort of incentivizing districts to send us more students. The other thing I think the board needs to be aware of is that in New Hampshire, there's legislation pending right now that would make. Uh, open enrollment below the land, which would say that anybody could send their child to any school as long as they're a resident of New Hampshire. And the compensation would be that the district of residence, you have to send eighty percent of the state calculated. Uh, cost per pupil to the receiving district. So let that sink in a little bit, keep you posted on it.
Which is less than our cost by several thousand.
Right, the only hope we would have there is volume. Uh, in that we have maybe a hundred or so seat capacity still at the high school and that if we could take in another hundred kids. You know, we'd also be looking at increasing our staff, so doing the math on that. Now, we're not sure if that's a net increase or, or net cost.
Yeah, big changes.
So I'm gonna try to make the insured content correct, is if this number goes up by this number as to is, that's the percentage discount they would get, okay?
Are we, are we talking about that in public or?
I don't think we want to talk about specific.
Okay.
But, okay, um, was this a unanimous vote at the tuition, like this is a unanimous recommendation?
No, the, well, the numbers did change, they were, I think when we. Approved the number in theory, it was somewhere around twenty four six or twenty four seven. Since the recalculation has gone down a few hundred, I still think that we say somewhere around twenty four six or twenty four seven, but. You guys can feel free to.
Neil.
Yeah, so my recollection from the last meeting that there was consensus and agreement around the twenty four four seventy number. Which was the result of the Vermont calculation.
So that was, um, a recalculation that Jamie moved.
Yes, so the number before that was twenty four six or twenty four seven.
Alright.
And then there was like about a three hundred dollar adjustment that we haven't had the opportunity to talk about.
Yeah, okay, so yes, so then Tara is correct that the numbers that we talked about at that last committee meeting were higher. Um, than the calculation that you see on that Vermont form in the package, so. Uh, more accurate to say than the committee did not officially, um, opine on that final number, have a recommendation, what I would say though. Is that if we're gonna use the Vermont formula, that is the number that gets spit out using that formula, right?
Which we haven't had a chance to vet since it's been recalculated, which I'm not entirely comfortable with. So, cause it should have been right when we talked about it before.
So Teresa, your thoughts on it?
Um, the only thing I want to say, I apologize, but, um. It's, it's, I know that in the top numbers and again, as we were running through it that day and everything else. So inadvertently, what you see from the projected long term facility cost, number thirteen. Because it was added into the expenditures, total expenditure at first. And then, you know, when Jamie and I were going back through and everything else, someone realized that. That number had inadvertently been duplicated, so it was a matter of taking back out the duplication. And not really changing numbers in the sense of refiguring, it was a duplication that we realized. That it was captured twice and we're like, oh, we're gonna take that back out.
The number that we did approve was twenty four six one seven.
So, I guess to Tara's point, the concern then, uh, is she said we were talking about. You know, the per people cost formula versus like actual per people cost formula versus the Vermont formula, what's the right and. You know, part of those conversations had to do with the numbers we were looking at, so I think that's her point, is that we just haven't had a chance to them. But in concept, with the numbers that we were looking at, we were definitely in agreement, certainly that it needs to change. And that this seems like a good formula.
Where I'm going with that tonight is, there is a mo, there is, it's under business of growing action. Are we helping up that it was to proceed to a vote tonight? Do you need more time? Do we have a drop dead date?
We do have a drop dead date, we need to make a, we need to make a motion tonight to approve.
It needs to be tonight? There are a few different numbers, I'm assuming that's for the high school or is that the high school and the middle school?
Just the high school, the middle school calculation, um, because this is so new to us. And we got the numbers sort of late in the, in the stage, was a, a, a significant disparity. Um, addressing the middle school numbers with the new calculation and it has to do with. Some new expenses like the athletics program as well as not a ton of tuition students and how those revenues. Are accounted for, so at this point, it doesn't make sense to make a significant change in that methodology. Um, until we really pin down this one for the high school and have some, a few years of data, I think.
Neil.
Teresa, could you help us out just for a reference point, in the current year, what's the tuition rates? I've got for RMS, nope, for Hanover High School.
Um, you know, I do not have that off the top of my head, I can't put it up.
Twenty three, four, one, nine.
Okay.
Twenty three, four, one, so that's current year.
Yes, and our draft projection with the, what I refer to as the wonky formula was twenty two, seven, five, six. And the one that we liked was the twenty four, six, seventeen.
So. If I'm doing the math in my head correctly, you're talking increasing ballpark of that in hundred or so.
Right, which seems very reasonable based upon our actual budgeting increase.
So for some of our larger constituents, would they be anticipating a number that much of a change if you.
I think we did not give them the opportunity to plan well this year. Based upon the communications and the strangeness of the format, we should have started talking before the budget season about this, it was. Well, I think lack of awareness, on my part, it was certainly lack of awareness. Um, so we should be doing this in a different cadence of timeline every year, I think that makes more sense. Um, especially with all the changes of fund, in funding. What I think it makes sense is for volume of students to offer discounts. Um, for a variety of reasons, which we can talk about in.
Do you guys feel the need for us to do a non-public related to this item?
I think just for awareness, it would be a great idea.
Okay, are we okay to? Looking to you guys, so can we combine all of the one non-public later and then have a motion on this after we come back?
I would love to hear everyone be comfortable with all of the information.
Yeah, so everyone help remind me of this reason when comes to list of items.
Yep, yep.
Is everyone okay with that approach?
Just, uh, for the note taker, a tickler to put this into, um, our agenda template for earlier in the year. Yes, August, September, whatever that looks like.
That's a great point. Okay, any other things we want to talk about in public related to this? Okay, seeing anyone, we recommend we move on. And to retreat topics, um, as we may have heard earlier today, there is a four chairs meeting this Thursday where this is one of the items coming up under discussion. If there's anything anyone wants to add, we haven't talked about, please feel free to email the relevant chair or you can write it up tonight. If you want, for example. We will play out that Jay and I are in early phases to work on this year's big survey, for lack of a better term. Um, where some of the things that are coming up might be well, that we can talk about, um, at four chairs. Anyone have suggestions for retreat topics, which, uh, for I believe is May ten, whatever Saturday it is.
Do we have outside people coming in legislators or anything like that, is that part of our plan this time around? It's okay if not.
I don't think we have them confirmed now.
Okay, I mean, I'm thinking we have a lot to do with strategic plan and such, so perhaps. Possibly just slightly updates as well, so, yeah.
Any other comments?
From a team effectiveness perspective, I think it'd be really helpful for us to learn more about each other and what strengths we bring to the table. In terms of our knowledge base and I think some of you know each other really well and others have asked, you know, a lot about each other and I think it would be best to spend some time. Even if it's half an hour or like we have pre-work where we have people fill something out, um. Based on my, my experience outside of this board, that would be very effective to help us be better as board.
I think it's a great point, certain fourth of us have been on this board for a month.
And we don't know you guys.
Right. And, and actually, it was someone pointed out the last handover meeting, we had obvious interview style questions with. In terms of our eight nominees who are there in person and Carrie stood up, we not know more about those eight than we do about her. And, and, and we were just starting to call out, we do typically do sort of ice breaking, getting to know you type stuff and I would encourage. The administration to maybe give that the same amount of time with Matt Moore's previous years.
Trying to remember your two truths and a lie.
Yeah, I don't want to do that again.
If you need help, I'd be happy to help.
Kelly, then Neil.
I'm a very thoughtful person and I, I really, I know everybody and the strengths we bring, I also want us to keep that part, um, very limited in time. Because I think something that happens, that has happened to us in previous meetings, we've started with that, it's lovely, but it takes a full hour or something. And then we don't have enough time to get to the work and I think, um, it's an important day for us to get to the work though.
I think there's a way to accomplish.
I like the pre-work idea.
Pre-work, yeah, it's, yeah, I'm all about thinking efficient and we also help introverts and extroverts who process. For a meeting to process so they don't feel put on the spot, so you do pre-work.
Neil.
Um, I, I am reminded basically with all of the new faces, um, but also for those of us who've been around for a while. I think it would be good for, uh, a portion of the meeting for training was the role of the school board member. And secondly, a refresher, um, and maybe focus just on the Hampshire side of the open meeting law.
Any other thoughts specific to board retreat? So now, let's move on to the Dresden Board Survey Results. For board members, this is our self-report survey basically how we're doing. Um, specific to Dresden, Jay, you want to walk us through sort of the big picture of all these things tonight?
Sorry, I was just trying to update the agenda.
Noting, I will point out that. Woe to us, four out of eleven-ish, twelve-ish responded to this. And this would be the previous board in terms of board membership as board and board chair and all those other things, so we have to keep those in mind. So we're talking about. A thirty-three to forty-fourish percent response rate of many people who are no longer here. So Jake, given those parameters.
Four responses, I don't know how much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mean from the survey, but. Um, the server, the responses are, are generally positive until we get to. We scroll down to item. Seven, the non-chair work that we undertake as a board is shared equitably, we got some mixed reviews on that one. Among the four, it was evenly split, two people thought we were doing okay and two people thought it was mixed. Um, and you can see the comments. There, there is someone who's optimistic saying we're getting better. And there is, so there's some mixed results on item ten. About training and that's to be expected since not everyone has been to a formal training, or at least that's the perception of peers about their peers. And question eleven, some mix, a mixed result saying that, um. Our Dresden School Board Organization and Structure is optimized to balance members' duties and time. Um, I periodically share with you how many days and hours of meetings that you've all graciously participated in. Um, and we have had this conversation every year since I've been here. And. It remains a, 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 I guess, a, a problem only in the sense that anyone thinks that there are. Too many meetings and too long meetings. I will remind the board at the retreat though. We, uh, we did brainstorm a number of ways that we can make the meetings more efficient and shorter. And then on the very next meeting, violated all nine or so of the suggestions we generated for ourselves, so. So we can try again at this retreat, I suppose. Uh, question thirteen, attendance at appointed Dresden School Board Committee Meetings is, we have, we have a person who thought that it was mixed.
Is that attendance by the board or attendance by other?
By the board.
By the board.
Yes.
Good question.
And so that's it as far as mixed, um, but it was again, a very small sample size even given the board turnover and, um, hopefully we can.
Be better.
Do better next time. You know, maybe it's, maybe the survey needs to be revised.
I think maybe, I forget which one that I do, so, and they're all the same, so maybe you can make us sit here at the end of the meeting and do it for five minutes. So I'll know I did the Dresden one at the Dresden meeting and the Hanover one at the Hanover meeting and, you know.
Session, we could do it live, but.
Hammer's not mine.
Um, yeah, so all contained, I did not do the survey. Um, I will also say that given the response rate, I think we should do it again. And review it at the retreat.
Would our three new members feel comfortable giving opinions on the meeting they've been to once?
I don't know, but they're.
I mean, I'm finding it's cute results, but I definitely don't have a sense of, I wouldn't know like if people are coming prepared to the meeting, like based on.
I mean, two times. I would love to hear though from an outside perspective.
Yeah.
Yeah, how efficient does it seem, having been here for three, like, I think that is actually a really valid perspective, personally.
I think new would be great.
Um, I also did not, um, fill it out, I apologize, I definitely did the handover one and then mentally checked it off. The three, having, doing the three is hard, it's hard for my brain, um. I, I, I agree with the results though and I, I just, I'm gonna explicitly say, it feels to me, um, like. Kim was doing a ton of work. That was non-chair, um, and that Ben is doing a ton of work that is non-chair and I know that's, I always struggle with that because, you know. Part of that I think is, you know, you take on the survey work because you enjoy the survey work. And you're very good at it, right, but it's sort of, there's a balance there and so I, I think, um, yeah, I, as four chairs, I think there's work. Still work to be done, especially with new people whose strengths we're gonna learn about at the retreat, um, how can we redistribute some of that work? Um, I will say Gina is becoming my new guru of efficiencies because Gina is incredible at figuring out. You know, how, how can we leverage AI to help us with some of these things and I think there are. Some missed opportunities there that we can, yeah, just as an example.
I don't need a survey to share, I think that there could be a different onboarding process for new board members that they go through to make sure they have the education pieces that, like. Like I.
Onboarding process?
And onboarding, yes, and it's not that I felt welcomed, I, I was, I felt very welcomed, I felt included and. If there were things that, like these courses I could have taken before I went to a meeting or when I, or something like how, what a board does or. I would have done them and take it response, this responsibility seriously because of the publicly elected board. But I didn't know what those things were and just have a checklist, like here's the ten things you need. To that school board member, and by the way, here's ten things to know about your board member, done, right, it's, yeah.
There's no way you'd be able to do it before your first board meeting though, since you meet the next night. So I think we can take.
Useful board member, you hit the ground running instead of hit the ground like.
And I will point out that we, I agree there's still issues and things we need to fix, but it is so much better than what it used to be.
I believe you, and everyone's.
Effort, I, I, the point, I always tell Neil and Kelly members that I missed my first multiple Dresden meetings because no one told me I was on Dresden. It was completely not reported to me and that is something that we, I think we're getting a lot better on, but there's still much more to do. Any other comments on the survey? Okay, I think we'll move right on, they're reading the policies. So for, um, board members that are new to Dresden, there is a sort of trickle down effect when it comes to policies. Most of them are discussed at SAU first, where sort of the meaty conversations happen, given, for example, what happened earlier today with the calendar one. And there's not as much discussion typically at Dresden or Hanover, Norwich is a little different that there's some Vermont specific thing. at Dresden or Hanover. Norwich is a little different, that there's some Vermont-specific things. So a lot of what we're looking at here tonight is stuff that we have already talked about at SAU in previous meetings. Not all of them, but a lot of them. Stuff that's new for us tonight are actually the first three and a half, which is IMBD, IMBD, IK, and EBCH. Note, there's an EBCH hyphen R on there. That is called an R version, which is basically sort of the implementation, what the administration needs to do in order to implement the actual policy, which in this case would be EBCH. We typically don't discuss in much detail or approve the R versions, but they are often included. So we can kind of see, here's their interpretation of that. But it doesn't get a line-by-line lead through the policy committee level. So now switching to my policy chair hat on, as Kelly may have mentioned, in terms of workload stuff. Um, IMBD has been discussed that policy, I think literally for years now.
Yes.
It is not long. You can see, I think it is four sentences and still took us that long. It needed some legal review. We had some parents bring concerns, concerns to us about it. Because if you think of the implications of what this could become in terms of in our districts, we have very motivated middle schoolers and parents. And what would be the natural outcomes if this became a bigger request? And it is a, I believe it's a requirement. Jay, you want to give some comments?
It's required by, by law. It was required really over a year ago. Um, our lawyer said that technically we probably should be granting credit for advanced middle school work, high school credit. Our practice has been that we consider the advanced work that students do at the middle school in placement. Uh, math as an example. And so we've worded the policy, uh, according to the letter of the law, it says we have to recognize or acknowledge advanced middle school work. I, I wouldn't be surprised if at some point we're challenged and we're forced to, um, to actually grant credit for it, it, really the only areas where we've had this as even a possibility are, are mathematics and world languages. And so the, the criteria that the policy lay out, or that the principal has to decide that the, the courses are equivalent essentially. And so, um, before the student rules. Right. And so where we were, where we were, our hand was forced on this in the past year was that the state also has a program called Learn Everywhere. And there are a really strange array of courses that students can sign up for that could be given by virtually anybody. One of them is the Science Academy that's, that's, uh, up the road here, and we had a student who was an eighth grader who took a course in the summer. And they went right to the, uh, secretary or the commissioner because we, it said we weren't giving credit for it. And the commissioner told me flat out and pointed me to the legislation associated just with that program. It said, we must give credit. So we did. But, uh, as, as far as I know, it's the only one, and Julie, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the only one recently that we've actually given credit for. And our worry too was really just for the mental health of our, our students. If we opened up that floodgate and now we, we have, we, we have kids taking, um, courses through the virtual, the V-LAC system at the advanced level and, you know, trying to be there, create room in their schedule to take other things and max out even more. We already have kids who go far beyond the twenty credits that are required. And, uh, I, I could just see that being another arms race. And so we'll have to carefully consider that as we move forward and as the state keeps changing laws.
So, and I'll also mention, um, which I just asked the tuition committee the same question. Policy typically doesn't come to the full boards unless the policy committee is unanimous. So if I don't mention this because it is unanimous, this isn't a fair, for our board, to board members, that is not always the case. And if that does happen, it's extremely rare, but it does happen. We would say that when we bring it to the board. Um, any comments on this one? It's short and sweet, but the possibilities are there, which is why it took us a while to get around it. Um, Ella.
Uh, no, it's no questions.
Sure.
Yeah.
Any comments on this one? We'll move right along to the second one, which is new to us, which is IK, which is a little bit related, if you know, which is delivered, because this one also has been bouncing around for about a year. And I saw half the policies committee on this, is just trying to remember which one is which, and what we talked about two months ago, I guess. We don't remember yesterday. So the big hangup that was on this one, there were several, but this also required a legal review. If you look at, um, the list of approved schools under E1, initially, this was actually sort of New Hampshire schools only, which is kind of a strange holdover because that would technically mean that we can deny anyone who took, you know, algebra two from any high school, and they have statements from any other state, and we would say no, because you're not going to official New Hampshire school. Which seems like madness for anyone who lives here. And there's other sort of tinkering by the policy committee in here. And Jay, was that the only significant one?
That was.
Yeah. So again, this is another one that's required by law. We have been sitting on it for a while, trying to get our, our hands around and how it balances all the other different sort of earning a bicycle credit, some of the eighth grade stuff, early graduation, all which kind of came to us at the same time and are highly related. We also had big, long discussions of what proficiency and mastery are defined as. There is not a definition in here. And what we boiled it down to was it is the building's principal to decide is what the student bringing, what they consider to be proficient and mastery. And we thought that was the best sort of, given all the nebulousness that that could become. Any comments on this one?
Depends if the language approved schools include but are not limited to address.
Yeah, we added the but are not limited to, thank you. Yeah, and we also, the all schools in Vermont and Maine, I think we added that as well. And I think that's the only thing we had. We changed that specific paragraph.
I'm good.
No, I'll mention.
No, that's just.
And then there is the third one, which is EBCH, chemical safety. This is a rather technical one that we had meetings with facilities and the principals of each school on this sort of making sure there is equal understanding of the policy committee, the facilities groups, the associated service personnel, and, uh, folks like Jamie and the principals, making sure we're on the same page about what this means, how do we interpret it, and everyone is on board with this.
Yeah, except with the spelling.
Yeah, that, that spelling was unintentional. It's only in the board docs link, it's not in the actual policy itself.
Ben, can I ask a question about the previous policy?
The previous one. Um, any questions on the chemical safety one? Okay, thank you, board members. Tim.
The, the first part, it says that, you know, you can demonstrate proficiency.
Yeah.
Initial question, because I did this in college all the time, was about language.
Yeah.
So if you were bilingual, could you come in and test out four years of Spanish?
We had that exact same conversation. Reminding my leader. Yeah.
I think we just, what we discussed was that there's a difference between being able to speak a language and, uh, demonstrated mastery of it. And as someone who grew up speaking Spanish and English, I can tell you, I would not test well in Spanish.
Right.
So there's, there are differences.
We're also getting things like, you know, reading materials and fiction, reading and analysis and all of that. I think that great call out, thanks for the reminder, Marcelo. Kelly.
Also just note that, um, world language is still not a graduation requirement. So that lessens that element of it, and perhaps that's why I haven't. Most of our students do it because it's helpful applications to have for years of a language. College counselors will tell you it's helpful in your college application to have four years of, of a second language, but it's not a requirement.
Yeah. And then you'll note there is a series of policies. I'm going to start with the letter A. Those have all been policies that we have discussed numerous times at previous, um, SAU meetings going back to prior to the election cycle. So I'm not planning on getting into great detail on that, however, now that I may wish to speak to it, but this has been discussed in great detail previously. Jay.
And you'll see in the administrative content, the, um, illegal advice that we got.
Right. Thank you. Any other comments on the policies? Note there are, um, in terms of approvals, there is only, none of these are going to be approved tonight, but there are two, um, annual ones that are coming up in business requiring action that I think at this point are fairly boilerplate. That we have approved several previous years in terms of conflicts of interest and the investment policy, which you already talked about, I think at both Hanover and Norwich. Any other discussions? Neil.
Um, sorry, just, uh, I keep rereading, I'm going back to IK.
IK, okay.
Cause I keep rereading what's an approved school. And while it doesn't exclude them, I'm wondering if we ought to specifically say any public school in Vermont. And I'm thinking about what happens if we had a kid come in from one of the tuitioning districts in Vermont that actually started at another high school and came to us, say like in tenth or eleventh grade. We would count, I would assume, right, those credits earned at another public high school in Vermont towards graduation requirements. And the way the policy is written, it doesn't exclude that. But it's, it's sort of awkward in the way that it says, and all schools in Vermont and Maine that are members of an interstate school district. Well, that certainly carves us out, but it doesn't carve out, for example, some kid from Heartland that might have gone, you know, one or two years at another Vermont school and then came to Hanover.
So my response would be, I appreciate what you're saying and I agree with you. But would we have to have that same argument for any state we don't mention? Does Vermont need a specific call out in here when we already have language saying it's not limited to? Because like we said, the original, original language actually only said.
Well, true. So I mean, good point, right? What do we do with kids that might transfer in from another state? We gladly accept them and we take their credits.
Yeah, and which invited, we have the not limited to thing because the preschool, so it was, it was a very weird initial sentence that I believe it was, New Hampshire schools only. Yeah, which makes no sense. I have no idea how that even survived the legislature, legislature level.
All right, I'm fine.
Thank you, Neil. Any other comments on, any other, any other comments on any other policies? Right, so you know, we'll move right along. Thank you everyone for that. To the substitute nurse pay, I believe this was discussed at a previous SAU meeting. And this is just the first time we've had a Dresden meeting since it also has been approved unanimously at Hanover. And, and many more.
It was, it was discussed at Norwich, and Norwich deferred to Norwich's Hanover colleagues and Hanover greatly, they acknowledged that, that the kindness and deferring, and then they passed it.
So I want to apologize. We had a very long meeting and we had some good news and we just. But knowing that you, you are hearing that you had discussed it very positively.
Well, they didn't, they didn't want to jump up and have.
I understand.
A differential. Yeah, I mean, to Jay's way, um, defer is one word. I would just say, I just wanted to make sure that our colleagues on this side of the river were in general agreement of this approach before we just plowed ahead with it. Sounds like you've greased the skids. Got any guilt, so go ahead.
Absolutely. It was approved unanimously at Hanover. And I know, actually, it is not on the list of, um, this is requiring action. Jay, is that an oversight?
Um, I think we added it as an action item in Hanover because it wasn't on that either. So.
Okay, so we have a separate motion for that maybe.
It's not a Hanover Norwich thing, it's Dresden also.
Cause we have to wait at the nurses as well.
Right, yeah.
Just, you know, just for quick, I mean, this isn't urgent, right? Well, except that now it helps with any substitute nurse is going to get paid more in Hanover.
Yeah.
I just say, I'm, I, 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 I am generally reluctant to add items at the last minute for action if they weren't previously on the agenda for action.
And I think that was more, I think it was an oversight in terms of the action, because you can see it's under, it's under discussion. I think it's just gotten missed for requiring action with our apologies at the agenda review. At the planning meeting. So I, I, as chair, had thought it was on the list. Then it's more inadvertent. Okay.
Okay, sorry. I was, I was missing, well. Yeah, I was misreading. I'm good.
Okay. Kelly.
I'll just add to help make the prison public a little more comfortable perhaps, that it, while it has a, a financial implication, it's a relatively small financial implication, which is part of our thinking and saying this makes sense.
All right, I'll move right along then to the RMS math update. Um, Tim has something on here as well, and we just added the mass server results that I sent by email, I believe on Sunday night, which hopefully board members had time to go through. That is now a publicly available document, properly redacted. So Tim, you want to walk us through your, your thoughts on it, and open up to the full board for questions?
Sure. So I tried to write a pretty short version of, of what we've gone through this year. Um, just because it can get really long and, um, so we basically started this program this year. We had a, because of things that had happened, we had an eighth grade math situation where we did a lot more individualized math work with the eighth grade. It worked out really well, or it seemed to work out really well, or feedback from it was the students were enjoying it. They were able to work at their own pace, and many of them actually worked at a much higher pace than they had predicted for themselves going through. So we wanted also to continue to make sure that we had enough rigor in our math curriculum, which there had been some concern about as we have changed the curriculum. Um, that it perhaps might not be preparing students as well as it could have been for when they got to the high school. Um, so we wanted to make sure that we could add things back in. And so this year especially, if you go through the survey, then we surveyed everybody in January. So we, we still have two different levels in seventh grade. I think that's important to remember. So there's straight seventh grade math, which is that's the same seventh grade math that has been for a long time. Seventh grade math with a little bit of pre-algebra at the end. Um, and then there was a seventh advanced math that we offered this year using the IM curriculum that we've been using K through seven. Um, and we're in the process of evaluating that. We did a survey at mid-year. The teachers actually did a survey at the end of the first quarter to see how the students were reacting to a much more individualized structure. Um, the students in seventh grade math really didn't like it. So we changed seventh grade math mid-year to bring back more large group instruction, uh, group work, works basically like a traditional math class that people are used to seeing. The seventh grade advanced math, the number of students who at that point had advanced so far, and they said that they actually liked it. So we left it. The survey, when we did it again in January, reflected that they didn't like it as much anymore. And we sort of looked at it and said, yeah, this probably is not working for a number of different reasons. Part of them developmental, part of them in an effort to try to, try to figure out how to get as much information as we could in curricularly. Um, and part of it, I think I outlined in there that um, we had noticed in eighth grade that when students worked at an individual pace, it actually lowered their anxiety. They felt like they were working at their own pace. Wasn't, they felt like, okay, I, I'm doing what I'm doing. I'm in control of how fast I work. They thought that that was great. Seventh grade, for whatever reason, developmentally, especially in the advanced math, people weren't, the students are not necessarily worrying about where they are, they're worried about where everybody else is. So, and when everybody else is in a different place, it just sort of increases their level of anxiety as to, I'm behind, they keep saying, I'm behind, I'm behind, like behind, what? You're supposed to be working at your own pace going, but so we have essentially said that we're not going to do that next year. Next year, we're going back to, we're going to have advanced seventh grade math, regular seventh grade math. It's going to be taught the way that it had been taught previously, um, going forward. So there will be there are advantages and disadvantages to both of that. So we will, we've had some students who have gone really fast through advanced seventh grade math this year. That necessarily, and we've had some people who are really far behind. So we're going to make sure that the people who are far behind are, are caught up. The people who have sort of run forward are going to still be able to do that, but they'll have to do it outside of the regular classroom because we're going to be working, um, within a more structured um, indirect instruction way. This is, um, we've done a lot of input between our seventh and our eighth grade math teachers who are working together to make sure that the, a lot of the information that is in eighth grade math, eighth grade algebra, eighth grade geometry is available for the students who are in advanced seventh grade math. Generally, the, the structure that's used is the teach, uh, subject to, or a concept to the class. And then for those skiers out there, you then have different amounts of work that you can do and there are. And then for those skiers out there, you then have different amounts of work that you can do and there are green circles, blue diamond or blue squares and black diamonds. That's what we're looking for. And so we tell students, you know, if you really want to go far, you really should be pushing to do the black diamond work. Which is again above or beyond. And it actually has allowed us to do some things too with the algebra curriculum, a lot of historically to try to get younger students through the entire algebra curriculum. There were certain things that were removed, um, as part of it because they didn't necessarily, they weren't necessary for the geometric part of it. They come back in Algebra II. A lot of things having to do with yeah, just different areas. So we were able to put that back in. There's a huge part of probability that got pulled out of Algebra, the Algebra curriculum in the past, that we're now able to try to put back in as part of the black diamond work. So, yeah, we, we tried it. We said we were gonna try it this way. We surveyed it, found out it really wasn't working very well in the seventh grade, so we're gonna go back um, and try to fix it, um, listening both to students and parents, uh, to try to figure out exactly what we can do better in terms of the communication. I, I know for a fact that the communication piece to parents is much easier when the entire class is in the same place. Uh, and they're moving forward sort of in a structured thing so you can get a syllabus and say, okay, this is where we're supposed to be. We know what we're supposed to be doing. It's also easier for the students developmentally in seventh grade who don't necessarily have the executive functioning skills yet to take on a lot of that planning for yourself. Um, so we'll sort of take that back from them and do ourselves and move them forward. Um, it is seventy, thank you, I wanted to thank Ben for going through, um, formatting all of the survey data. I had copied and pasted and tried to redact it as much as possible and clearly I'm not, like the presentation part of it, I, I don't do a whole lot on paper anymore, so um, thank you for putting the numbers in. I just, I was like, I, I don't really, I don't have a great idea to know how to do it. Yeah, so it's all there. I think some of the survey data, I, I think when I read it before, I think I had sensed that it was getting redacted. I think I read it as many teachers do. And the negative things sort of stick with you a lot more than some of the positive things. Um, and we certainly were a lot of positive. There's positive feedback as well, and it always strikes me that they seem to come right next to each other. Someone says, hey, this is great. I wish we had more of this. And then the next person says, this is horrible. I wish we never had it at all, so. That's, we're, we're gonna try to keep doing the best we can to make sure that we, one, prepare students for the high school and two, try to make sure that the people leave the eighth grade thinking of themselves good math students or as somebody who can do math. Um, because that was really the, the most punishing thing with the old structure that we had was sort of the micro tracking. Is we had students who in the seventh grade had already decided, I'm gonna get a math, I just can't do it. So, and that's an awfully hard hold to do yourself about it. But I don't know if there are any other, I'm sure there are other questions and comments, but I think a lot of the, the energy that, that people had put forward was to say, you know, this is a really not a good structure. So we're changing the stru- structure again and moving forward. We do have a meeting set up with Corin Benedict at the high school. Um, to sort of talk about more specifically what they're seeing in the high school in terms of preparation. So far this year, what they're saying is that the students seem to be really, really well prepared. Those who got, or are in Algebra II H, those who are in Geometry, Geometry H are, are if not better, they seem better prepared than they have been in the past. So we feel like some of it's working.
Don't talk to the floor, Ella.
Yeah, more of a point of clarification, um, I think so I have a sister, she thinks this is right now at MCS and she's really motivated math student. She's gonna be at RMS next year and I think my family's been having a bit of trouble understanding what the system is at the middle school. Um, just kind of how it works. And I think based on what you said, the seventh grade is going back to regular and advanced with uh, you said an option to go further if they want to.
It's the same option that's, that sort of exists in the sixth grade in, at RMS, which is if you can, so something will be presented. If you demonstrate, hey, I got it, I understand probability. Okay, here's some more work that you can do in that area that will then prepare you better for when you get to the eighth grade.
Is the advanced class separate from the regulars? And then I was just wondering if you can give just a brief explanation of how the eighth grade format works, because we had a bit of.
Right, the eighth grade format works and if you, you've ever seen it, it's pretty, uh, pretty incredible. So you get a, you can, if you start, uh, so if we have a student who came in, we had no information on it. We would start them in eighth grade math and you'd have a list of skills that you need to master to have eighth grade math. And below that, then there's a list of skills that you have to master to complete Algebra I and then below that, a list of skills to complete Geometry or Geometry H. So every single one of those skills is something to, um, a lecture that the the teachers themselves have created. So they've created, they basically recreated the lecture that they would give. We're gonna talk about quadratic formulas, this is the lecture that I would give. Here's what it is. Students watch the lecture, they then have, um, access to three different levels of work that they can do on that. And they'll sit down and if they have questions, ask the teacher. Teacher meets with the student on a weekly basis to say, okay, where are you, where do you wanna be, what do you have to do, how are we going forward with this? Um, are you ready to take a test? If you're ready to take the test, go. So what it allows people to do in the eighth grade especially, and we've had a number of people who've done this is start out slowly and then are able to move much faster, sort of once they figure out, once they figure out how the whole thing works for them. So we've had students who started out or regular eighth grade math, have completed all of eighth grade math, all of Algebra I. Um, and have a shot at Geometry. So we go to Algebra II H, even though they're wrong in eighth grade math when they started. That's kind of what we're hoping for.
Does every student start, start of eighth grade math or do you place them depending on?
You're able to place out, um, well, they also do things. Wednesday is spiral day in eighth grade math, so even though they work independently, Wednesday is a day that spirals back to things that they've done before. So it's not like, okay, I finished this, I'm never going back to it until I get to it in Algebra II. So on Wednesday, you might have to go back, the students don't like it, because they're like, I already did this. Well, yeah, but you still are gonna have to do it later. So they go back and do that again. So there's a, a sort of a testing process at the beginning of eighth grade, so so that you can sit down with the teacher and figure out exactly where it is that you want to be. Cause we were trying, what we found was we had a number of students who, for whatever reason, sometimes it just goes away. Well, I did Algebra I, I'm fine, I'm ready to go. And then you ask them to, if they can do the algebraic skills that they did the previous year and they've forgotten all. So it probably makes sense to try to go back and do that at the beginning.
But not everyone starts together.
So I was really curious about the disconnect that I saw between how students are experiencing this versus parents. And I was hoping you, I, I'm gonna pull on the yellow, I have multiple questions. That's my first big question. And then I have a question for Julie, which is how are you seeing, and you started getting at this, but how are you seeing the kids who are coming into the high school? Like, how are they coming in in terms of preparation? And then my third question is like different kids learn in different ways and, um, you know, Ella's sister may be a super advanced student, not the most kid. I know they are my neighbors, I know how smart they are. There's other kids who have different learning styles and abilities and how are we meeting the needs or kids who don't have parents who are like on them. And so those are like my big wonders about all this.
So the first part, um, when we did it, we, when we did the original survey, we were just trying to get feedback from everything and the, the some of the disconnect between students and families is I the students in the eighth grade are the ones who are the most positive about what's going on. So I think that, and a lot, and since there were more students, I think that that skewed sort of the student ideas. I think fewer eighth grade parents. So they're like, math seems fine, or does it seem to be a problem? So they didn't necessarily fill out the survey. Seventh grade was where we had our issue with, students were like, I don't like this. I don't know what I'm doing. They have a lot of anxiety. So I think that's part of it. Part of that has to do with developmentally, part of it has to do too where it's just much clearer in eighth grade for the students and for the parents as to, here's the sequence, right? This is what you're going to do if, to get where you want to get. And that because it was a new, I mean, this was the first year we used that advanced seventh grade curriculum. We didn't have all of that planned out. Next year it will be more planned out. So I think it'll be less, it'll be very clear, like here are the units, this is where we're gonna do them, this is how you have to do it. It's much more structured that way.
Tim, it's my understanding from going through the survey that you provided, you didn't separate out seventh and eighth grade parents, right? There's not a question, are you seventh grade or are you eighth grade, right?
No, it's, it's what you are, but then it doesn't do the, I mean, we, there, there might be a way to do it, but it would involve significant yeah, significantly more person hours.
Okay, but there's, there's not a way that we could say the eighth grade parents seem happier than the seventh grade parents.
No, it's only because you can, like because I know certain things when I read the comments, I can pretty much, I can figure out.
I did read the entire thing, um, which thank you for getting it together. Uh, I am really interested in that seventh and eighth grade breakdown though, because I did get a sense general is like I was taking notes of the eighth grade students and parents were more positive, which made me really want to understand a lot more about the seventh grade experience, like why, why did this happen? Like, and we were asking students and parents here, but like, how are the teachers feeling about the instruction? Do they feel like they are capable of it? Doing that kind of a model is very different. And so like, was it an implementation thing? Like, how, how do we know that nuance? And it's hard, given it's all together, I found it really hard to kind of make any meaningful conclusions.
And I think, I mean, I think what we want to do too, although it's I'm, I'm sort of going back and forth. Like, this survey was in January, we made some changes. Not sure if we want to go back because it's again, like, we're not, we're not gonna be able to change the advanced seventh grade math in the way that we want to for next year because the people in the class are at such disparate levels that we can't sort of be like well, I know you're four units ahead, but now we're going back here. Like, that, it, it doesn't seem fair, it doesn't seem right. Um, we'll definitely do it again next year. Part of it was, again, this is, the eighth grade has basically been working on this for three years. So this is sort of the third year that they, and they've done it at little bits, the sort of they they did the individualized algebra curriculum one year. And then they added eighth grade math to that curriculum the next year, and then this year they added geometry. So they've had more time to sort of get it structured, get it forward. And we also have people teaching in the, in the public community, but I don't think it's outside the realm of what people know, our eighth grade math teachers are, um, much more experienced. Like, they've been doing it for a much longer time, so they have a bigger sort of thing to draw from in order to implement it. So part of it was implementation, part of it was they were doing this for the first time and that was the other thing that we noticed is it's, it's hard on teachers. It's really hard on the teachers. But the eighth grade teachers would tell you that it's worth it. They're like, they feel like they're able to talk to more students individually. They're able to, and they have students coming in basically every single planning period. If you're on the eighth grade hall, you'll have students who will come out to study to go sit in the math class, just go sit in the math room to work on math. Which is something that they're, you know, they've decided they want to do. And again, that's, I think, something that's developmental that the eighth graders are able to do that the seventh graders are like, I do math when I'm in math class and then to answer your third question, Dana. The learning specialists in the eighth grade really, really like this structure because it allows students to sort of go at their own pace. They, you know, all the, the, uh, people in the learning centers or five and four coordinate or wherever, they can see like, okay, this is where you are. Let's watch the video, we can do it together. We can figure out what it is that you need to do. It's, it's much more that sort of structure. They think it's, it's really good and it sort of does away with, uh, one of the things that we really were trying to do is get away from the stigma of especially in Hanover, like you're on grade level, you're doing eighth grade math and somehow you're behind, right? Because everybody else is doing something much higher. So they're in the math class with everybody else, they're doing that the same way everybody else is. So it has been very good. There are definitely some students who don't do very well. Um, and that with the screen learning, that's something that we're, um, we're working on and trying to make sure that we actually build time in. And that's where the, especially on Wednesdays, there's more ability for direct instruction. Um, there is a lot of times when you can sit down, uh, one of the other things that happened, sorry. Um, if the eighth graders also, I think because of developmentally, they sort of self-form groups. They figure out in the class, like, okay, here, here are students who are doing basically the same thing I do. So we're gonna sit together and we're gonna work on the same thing at the same time. So it becomes de facto group work. Seventh graders don't do that. Like unless you tell them to sit with somebody, they're gonna think that they have to do it entirely on their own, or they're just gonna sit with their friends. Which is another thing I'm here to try to figure out.
And actually, I, I struggled with the group comments, cause I saw a lot of positive, or like, I like being with my friends, but also maybe worry about the social dynamic. Is it really mixing by difficulty of where you're at in the curriculum or is it, I get to be with my friends? Which may speed you up, or it may slow you down, or it may ignore the kids who are more introverted and aren't getting help or talking with anyone. And so that adds another element to this that I think we have to be very careful with.
What we try too is with the individualization, and again, if, if you can do it right, then the students who like to sit and talk with people can do that. And the people who, cause one of the things you, it, it comes out in a couple of comments from the students. Like, we've always, well, we know that math is now, they do in free work. And there are some students who just like, I just want to sit quietly by myself and do my work. Like, I don't want it. I do group work in all my other classes, I just do this. And that also gives those students the ability to do that. And we've had some students who just then take off because they don't, like, they don't have to worry about everybody else. They can just sit there and do their math.
I think my first response is like the survey made me want a better survey. Like, I didn't feel like I could get enough information in terms of like, I want to know the kids who are already doing well in math. Like, it's great, but maybe they continue to do really great in Excel. The kids who are already struggling in math, are they continuing to struggle, right? And I think, um, you know, yeah, there's some communication thing with the difference between response from kids and parents. To me, there was like, oh yeah, some, somewhere in here is just a communication error, right? Like, that probably has little to do with the actual work. Um, but I also wanted to know teacher stuff. I wanted like that concrete data around, we are seeing outcomes that feel positive because I definitely, I mean, in reading the comments and knowing very little about the math curriculum, I do not have a middle schooler, um, but thinking about, um, like just some concerns, right? Kids go at different paces, um, you know, professionally, I tend to work with kids who are like struggle a ton more in school. And so I think I was like, whoa, those kids are not asking teachers for help. That is not a skill set that they have. And so how is that addressed? Um, I also know there's lots of studies that show like ultimately teachers are the key, right? Like, study after study says like, good teachers are actually what makes a difference. And so, um, in a class, that's a lot of self-direction. If it's not that experienced teacher, is it even more detrimental to the ability of this curriculum? You know, like, should any of those eighth grade teachers retire? You know, like, just thinking about, um, if it's a new math teacher who's implementing this curriculum, is that different than a really well seasoned? Um, so yeah, just some super concrete questions in terms of how we get information about, is this working?
The asking questions thing is an interesting one because it comes up a number of times. And then other people are like, well, you know, my, my student doesn't want to ask questions. I'm like, well, I understand that. There's built in, the teachers build in time every day. And when you go to the classrooms, they'll check in with students, pretty much every student, every single day. So it's not like I have to ask a question. The, there, people are gonna come and be like, what are you doing? Why are you doing it this way? You know, that's sort of like, let's talk through the math and figure it out on a, on a pretty regular basis. My other question is, just from my own children, like, if, if you're in a room where everybody's quiet and they're all working on something individually and people are going to the teacher to ask questions, it's normalized. To me, that sometimes seems better than having to raise your hand in the middle of a lecture and saying, wait, I don't understand. I'm like that to me is the one, that's the really difficult one. Because those are the kids who just, if I sit here quietly and look like I'm taking notes, no one's gonna ask me anything, but I really don't know what's going on. So we're trying to, again, that's one of those things where, and even the new teachers in, in seventh grade, they're very good about that part. A lot of what's really difficult is just trying to keep track of eighteen different students in eighteen different places and A lot of what's really difficult is just trying to keep track of eighteen different students in eighteen different places, and that takes a lot of work.
One thing I would point out is. I see what you're saying in terms of the teachers walking around stuff, but it seems like a lot of teachers, a lot of parents and students would dispute that. Where a lot of comments were saying, the teacher kind of poos any questions or says that you should know that, or they don't talk, or they're, they're busy and not interrupt them. Which will probably fight with students and parents, or most students set flat out who scared the teacher. And so there's the, obviously, this is hearsay, he said, she said, whatever it is, but there's enough of a pattern. By several parents and students within the same question, so you know they're different people. That it's concerning, both as a school member, but also as a parent.
Right.
That this is happening, or at least there's a perception that it's happening. So what can we do about that?
I, I think one of the other things that I, I put in the little, I forgot to highlight it, um, and. Robin and I talked about this, cause we talked about these survey data last week as well, Robin Steiner. That a large part of the illustrative math curriculum is something called productive struggle. Um, that's sort of built into the curriculum that. Whoever is writing the curriculum, don't, they don't want the students to understand it right away. Like, there is value in. Okay, you, you don't understand it. But, you know, go back and read it again, see if you can figure it out, try to pick out the words. You know, and I understand that from a teaching standpoint, that's probably really important. So the student has the aha moment, like, oh, now I get it. But I also understand if you're a student and you're like, I've been trying this for five minutes, I don't get it. And the teacher's like, well, yeah, but if you go back and try it again. But we also do see a number of students, we have in the sixth grade, happens most is. I, I'm gonna ask a question, and if you don't give me the answer. Then that's your fault as the teacher. Like, I asked the question, you're supposed to tell me the answer. And the teacher's like, no, I'm really not, you're supposed to work through it. That's another part that developmentally, I think is one of those things, you know, like, hey, I asked for help. And they didn't immediately give me the answer, so it's the teacher's fault. So that's a problem. Now, whether that happens a lot or not. I can say, and I understand, I'm fully understanding that if I go and sit in a room, teachers are gonna act different, right? That if I'm sitting in the room, but. I have a secret. Right? So I have the rolling desk and I actually sit outside the room. And listen so that no one knows I'm there. And I haven't ever heard. You know, teachers say, go back and do it again. I'm busy, don't bother. I've never heard that. Right? I, I'm sure that that's the perception, and in middle school, we talk all the time about perception is, becomes reality very quickly. Especially for the seventh graders or eighth graders, I mean, at that age group. I perceive that you don't like me, you don't like me, it doesn't matter what you, okay, so we have to try to continue. And it's an ongoing structure to try to figure out.
Right. And, and we know from previous services, people in general that often give a recording, this happened, they're not necessarily talking about their own kid. They're kind of like something they.
Yeah, that happens a lot.
With the parent groups.
It's fine for me, but you're picking on my friend. You get a lot of that.
So questions are popping up. I'm gonna have one counterpoint with that, which is what we need more of my parent head on, which is a concern that I've had that people talk about in the survey repeatedly. It's been brought up at the math forums repeatedly. And to me, it's an ongoing issue that the survey elucidates quite clearly, and I don't necessarily see an easy solution to it, I'm still gonna say it anyway, which is. With the illustrative math program, which happened to my kid both in elementary school and middle school. Your point that you brought up where they don't necessarily see the exertion. And I get things where even now, and in elementary school for the same kid, is we get the workbooks that come eventually when the workbook is full. And in it throughout, when I'm flipping through what happened to my child months ago, there's things where they got it wrong, and it's never corrected. Because there's no oversight of the material. The teacher does not look at it, and A does not look at it. So the kid. And the parent, depending on how stupid they are in math, does not know it's wrong. And it doesn't seem to be corrected. And that is not good, in my personal professional opinion. Because they're not, they don't know what to do about it. And when I talked to the kid about it months after the fact, cause that's when I found out, it's like, I don't remember. You know, because it, now it's a gunpoint, but it also means I don't know if he or she ever learned it. But of course, that also would mean that the teacher would need to be looking at twenty times six or whatever it is, hundred and twenty problems a day. Every day, which is also.
There was, there was one specific comment about that, and I, I share your concern, but we did have the one that somebody wrote, it's like. The teacher should every day. Correct all the homework. Figure out what was wrong. Figure out why it was wrong, and then email the parent. What happened that day and what they need to work on that night. I'm like, that's a tall order. There's also seventy-five kids a day.
But it could be, it could be some sort of middle ground here where answers are. Given out the following day or weekly, here's what it was last week. Especially cause now at the middle school level, you're starting to find where some parents are gonna be uncomfortable being like. I don't know the answer to that. And that's where we're gonna have struggles with that, right? Ella, Kelly. And that's it for now.
Yeah, this is not at all meant to do the derail the conversation, um, just because I have to step out soon because studying for test called. I did wanna thank the board on behalf of the mock trial team. Um, we're really grateful for all the support we've received from the community. Um, I know you're considering the, uh, for our foundation donation today, but, um, yeah, we're just super grateful for. All the support we've received through our fundraising efforts, and we're really excited to go to national.
Awesome. Thank you. Good luck on your time.
So it is getting late. I know we have other things to do. I, I'll be honest, I'm feeling very frustrated. Because I just feel like we've gone round and round and round on this. I still don't know where the teachers are on this, like, haven't heard from a teacher all year. We've been talking about this, still don't know, haven't seen a survey, haven't seen anything. I feel like this data, it's a very, like, the very best thing to get to that is it's already four months or three months old, right? And it's, you know, and we changed something since this stuff was assessed. And so, you know, now the seventh grader is doing different things and. And that our answer is, okay, we're gonna go back to the other way, when I still don't have data about this way that we've been arguing for and pushing for. It's just, I'm very frustrated with where we're at with this curriculum because. You know, to answer Gina's question from twenty minutes ago. You know, Mike, I have a kid who's a ninth grader, eighth grader, fifth grader for him. The kid is a seventh grader, she's finally starting to get there, finally starting to figure it out. We're getting a little more communication, it's going okay. Um, but I, you know, there's no data because this is the first time seventh grade has gone through, so that's not at the high school yet. And now we're gonna change it again. And so I just, ah, I'm feeling very frustrated. That's not a very positive. But I am frustrated.
Gary, you wanna ask a question?
Yeah, sure. So I, I know I said this the last meeting, and we've been manially focused on middle school math, but I would like to still, as a board member, request that. Some of these questions that were asked. Um, on the survey, get asked to our high school students. So questions like. Do you enjoy math? Do you feel that the math programs are supporting me and enabling me to learn math? And I think it's anecdotal evidence, but. I think there's gonna be some eyebrow raising because a lot of classes at the high school, I believe, are taught with worksheets. And unless you're a kid that's really motivated in math, and that's what we are very focused on in this district. There is a lot of kids that should like math that don't like math at the high school because of the way it's taught. Um, and I think that's something that would come out in a survey, and the survey question has got me thinking that if you were to ask a lot of these same questions to the high schoolers. It would be very interesting to hear their thoughts. Because there's no reason why every kid in high school shouldn't love math, right? The worst thing in this world is when you become scared of math. So I think that this should be something that we, yes, we can continue to focus on the middle school, but I would like us to start looking at the. High school math curriculum too, cause I think. You know, some of these things in the way that math being taught. At the middle school is propagating itself at high school and. We're just not even seeing it because we're so focused on this middle school.
But, Julie, I know you guys do high school level surveys on occasion. Do you have any data that'd be ready to go on that, or would that be a future?
And I'm, I'm talking, sorry to interrupt, and I'm talking, ask the students. I don't wanna hear from the teachers. I wanna ask the students. How they feel about math? Do they enjoy math? Do they like their math class? Do they feel like they're being taught math? In a constructive manner, and I have a feeling the answer. Except for some of the kids that really love math and take all those worksheets and just go home and do math because they love math. There's gonna be a lot of negative answers.
Uh, so Julie, point you on whether it's already happening, then Lisa, then Neil.
Um, we're, we're happy to survey the kids, if you want us to. They do surveys every, um, for every class. At the semester point or at the halfway point for every class. So those surveys we could bring up. For teachers, we can get new surveys if you want, um. If you wanna do that. And I would agree, I think you're gonna find that some kids. Don't like lots of their classes. Math, for instance, every time we talk about March intensive. Right? Like to get a ninety percent, whatever, I would do that class again. Rating doesn't always happen for every English class and chemistry class and math class. And so if we want, just send me a survey, we'll survey them if you know, if you hear that. Um, so, and I'm happy to produce the results so we could figure that out. Um, I wanted to answer your question, so, um, so I just texted the math coordinator because I didn't wanna misspeak. Um, and so things that we've noticed, if we, she said it's too early to tell. Um, we can't really say yet if they're better prepared or worse prepared for the high school. We don't know yet. What we can say is we stopped giving placement tests for high school classes. And the middle school teachers are appropriately placing them. So we found this year that, that. The tests weren't any better than the teacher saying where they should be placed. Um, we are noticing more kids in the last two years that need to start at Algebra One with us. We used to not have many sections of Algebra One. Why that is, I don't know, but we're, that's the case. However, we don't necessarily feel badly about that because. She would say we support a really strong foundation in Algebra One and notice that that's the key to success for future math. And as you know, with most teachers, they wanna be the one to teach it to the kids, but they think they're better at it. So they're happy to teach them Algebra One, right? Um, and then the, um. Last thing she'd say though is she thinks that we just, we are, we, however we get these kids. We have pathways for them at the high school, we can meet their needs. Um, we have appropriate classes to book them in, to send them on their way. But they, but the department here feels like that foundation in Algebra One. Where, whether it happens at the middle school, whether it happens here is the key to their future math success. That's, so that's, yeah. Okay, and if we need a survey, we could give the same survey if we want.
Right, Lisa, then Neil and Michael.
Yeah, I mean, Julie just sort of made my point is I thought, I, I keep wondering like, to what end? Are we doing all of this stuff? And my understanding was we were doing it to make sure that the kids had a. A strong foundation in math because. Doing Algebra One too early is not helpful. And I, I, I just. I'm kind of with Kelly on the frustration level. It, it helps to hear from the math, you know, the high school math department because I kind of, my understanding was it sort of started there that. That high school teachers were seeing things that they needed from the middle school, and the middle school was responding, and then the middle school was doing things differently. So it just, it feels like. Hearing from people at both levels would be really helpful for trying to figure this out. And then my only other question. Regarding the seventh grade is it's only been one year of doing it in the seventh grade. You, I, I kept hearing that it's because seventh graders aren't developmentally ready for this kind of learning. I'm wondering. Now that I'm in a seventh through twelfth grade school, there are personalities that every grade level has. Is it that seventh graders in general aren't ready for it, or is it just this particular cohort? Of seventh graders isn't ready and next year's cohort will be. And I just, I mean, I don't know that we can answer that, but I, I, I am concerned that we're going back to something. Having only given it one year's worth, when maybe this particular cohort of seventh graders just isn't ready for self-paced work, but next year's will be. And last year's might have been, had they been given the opportunity. So I, I, again, I, I'm not expecting any answer to that right now, but it's just. These are the sort of questions that I'm, I'm wondering about.
I think it's, I think it's both. And then certainly one of those like. Robin and I talked about it, especially with a smaller class, when you look at percentages of where people are. This particular eighth grade class, we have a higher percentage of students with I U Ps and significant learning. Um, issues than we did last year. So we're gonna have more people who are gonna start in algebra, it's just.
Right.
Like, and you know, it's a huge percentage jump last year, the one point five, this year eighty percent of the class, and people be like. It's like, it's like poor students, right?
Right.
So that makes the huge jump. I think that there are certain personality, you get more of those personalities who are ready to work on. Um, self-paced work in eighth grade than you have in seventh grade. Even those students in seventh grade, a lot of times who want to be able to do it. Just in terms of the organizational structure. Seventh graders are a lot less organized than eighth graders, especially at the beginning of the year. And I think that that's where one of the other issues. That comes in, and at some point, we're gonna have to try to evaluate. The transition between MCS and RMS because the whole school structure. Of MCS is a lot different. And we do have this, one of the things that they really like about coming to RMS from MCS is there's a lot more freedom. But with that freedom comes. You're gonna have to take care of a lot more stuff on your own, which can be a big transition for students.
And just follow that point, I, I. It reminds me too that like, there are. It's hard to generalize this because I'm thinking of my own oldest child who in seventh grade was in a self-paced. Lowest level seventh grade math class. He is not generally organized and he thrived in it. He managed to do three years of math in one year because it was self-paced and for whatever reason. He could hit repeat on the videos as many times as he wanted until he was comfortable with it, and that worked for him. So it just.
Yep.
It, I don't know, it kind of goes back to every child should have an I E P, and we just call him something different, then there we go.
I appreciate what you're saying in terms of it's only been one year and what is that too early, but also, and I. My recovering academic tab, I don't like, I agree, and in five years of tangible results, and then we'll do a detailed analysis. But these are also real kids.
Right.
That only get one chance for sixth grade disclosure on the sixth grade parent. And be really hard to look at those people and say, we know these have these huge problems. We've validated that there are legitimate, large, significant concerns.
Yeah.
And so let's keep it going and keep it running.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, Neil.
A lot of interesting discussion, a lot of great points. I will admit that somewhere along the way. I've lost what the, what is the board level decision or consideration? Before this body. Is this an example of a curricular change that was brought to us for approval? What, what, I'm, I, I, I have honestly lost the point of why we're discussing this as a board.
I think what prompted the particular discussion tonight. Was that there was significant board interest in seeing the full survey results, which, as Tim mentioned, are now three and a half months old. And there were repeated requests to see this data and talk about it, which is what we're doing tonight.
Okay.
And then the second point would be. Are there changes coming as a result of this? Did it go through the proper channels?
Well, so, this is something that came up before, and Robin and I did not. Discuss it at, when we talked about math before, and someone said that there was, this was a curricular change, and in fact, it wasn't, like. We use the, uh, illustrative math curriculum, K through seven, this is illustrative math curriculum, but changed the delivery system. Of the same, basically the same curriculum that we had. So we've changed the delivery system, we've evaluated that and been like, okay, this probably wasn't the best way going forward. We've done it. And this happens at initiation all the time, and a lot of times it goes much faster than you, you can't do in academia, right? You try a flip pass term, uh, it didn't really seem to work very well, so we're gonna go back and have somebody different.
So if you're pointing out that you don't consider this a curriculum change. This was the reason why the, there's a curriculum policy that came into place that our board approved of.
Right.
So are you saying that that curriculum policy would not cover this change that you've made last year?
Last year, um. But I think we tried to make a stronger curriculum policy and. We basically put the brakes on it because people said we need to have, we still need to have. Seventh grade math and advanced seventh grade math. We have to have that split in seventh grade. Because originally we had thought that we. If we have everybody together in sixth grade, we would keep everybody together in seventh grade. And, but that was a change from what we had had before. So I think maybe that there was a change there, but. In terms of. What we had said last year, which is we're gonna offer these two things, and what we did. Those lined up. Like we said, we're gonna offer seventh grade math and advanced seventh grade math, and that's what we did.
Uh, Michael then Deb.
Yeah, I, I, yes, of course I can. Um, and I, at this point in the conversation, tend to agree with Neil. Right? We've spent so much time on this, and we generally don't do that if something's successful. I would say, in my opinion, we did make a curriculum change. We went from teaching algebra to offering access to algebra materials. And, you know, but I'm not an educator and I just don't feel hurt on this. I keep bringing it up because my constituents bring it up. And I happen to have a kid in the seventh grade. So seventh grade parents bend my ear all the time about math. And then reading the survey results was brutal. And so for me, I feel like my job is to hold the superintendent accountable. I don't manage principals. But I have to tell you on this issue, I feel like there's been a lot of talk on it, but I don't feel like parents are really hurt. I guess we're gonna go back to the way it was in seventh grade, so perhaps that's an admission that it did not go well. But meanwhile, you have a cohort of kids who are kind of stuck in between various math courses that used to exist. So I see you shaking your head and I regret not being there. But Tim, I just have to tell you, at the time, this first came up last year, it was obvious that this was half paid. Expectations were not set. The plan was not executed. The feedback has been consistent. And then I think the best thing to do would be to say, sorry, we got this wrong. And we'll fix it. Now, at this point, my own kid is basically homeschooled in math. And so we are fine. We are on track and we'll get to high school in the shape in which we need to. But it's really not about that. It's about the fact that seventh grade math comes up in nearly every conversation I have with other parents. And I just feel like we haven't done a good job of articulating expectations, executing upon a well delineated plan, and teaching kids math. I think there's a fundamental difference between teaching children math and providing access to math material. And so it's been a year of frustration on this. But with that, I've said my piece and I will not comment on it again. And if I have additional concerns, I'll bring them to Jay and to Robin.
Thank you, Michael. Deb.
I, I really appreciate what Michael said. And the only thing I was gonna say was that I do think when delivery changes as radically as it did, that that is something that needs to come to the board. Um, so I don't, I don't know how you, you wanna parse a policy language, but I feel really strongly about that.
So the fact that we're having this conversation verifies what we said. I mean, it's obviously a huge concern of the community and shall be brought to the board in the future.
Uh, Michael, is your hand still up or is this a separate question? All right, nevermind. Take that hand down. All right, are we all ready to move on on this? Okay, thank you, board, for those for that nuanced discussion. After reading the comments, I know it was long, but we appreciate your time on that. Thank you, Tim. All right, next up, donation, we're gonna totally do one eighty here, we're gonna talk about donation from the Burn Foundation. Two of the mock trials, two of them, for mock trial stuff that Ellis elucidated earlier and for the Unified Prom. Julie, anything to chime in on either of these?
The Unified Prom is an annual gift that Dorothy gives us and the mock trial is not annual.
Optimistically, yes.
Yeah, so obviously thank you to Dorothy for her support and I understand that that might not go on forever and those are things we need to think about, but you know, she, I think we prefer that we ask versus decide to not ask her, but I think we need to be mindful that someday she won't be there to ask, so. But thank you.
Move on to business requiring action. Note, there happened some changes here where the so we don't, so the nurses has to be done separately. Do we have a tuition rate that people have in mind, given the previous discussion?
We just wanted to discuss, we wanted to discuss this in non-public.
Oh, thank you for that reminder. Okay, so then.
I did put it down into, when we come back, non-public.
So we're gonna see if we can have a craft a new agenda.
Discuss it very quickly.
Neil, go first, because there's one, the nomination list is in this consent agenda.
But it's in the non-public.
Right. So is there a need to talk about it in non-public first?
Right. Julie, do you have anything you wish to particularly present regarding the nomination list?
Just a human wanted to retire and then decided not to retire and we don't have to hire that position anymore.
Oh, good.
All right, there is still several, I will point out, there are still several need for a non-public.
Not an AI.
Even if Robin is comfortable with that
Yes.
language in terms of business requiring.
Yeah.
Okay, so in terms of a refreshed consent item, and they'll note that the subsequent nurse pay is item G with the same parameters that discussed at previous boards. So I will take a motion for items B through J by consent, Deb.
I move to approve items B through J by consent.
Second by Lisa, we have to do one at a time since we have folks online, starting with Neil. Will you go, yes?
Sullivan, yes.
Oh, yes.
Akonia, yes.
Christie, yes. Nelson, yes. Russell, yeah. Rosa, yes. Yvonne, yeah.
Garrett?
He doesn't vote.
Thank you for that. Okay, sorry, Garrett.
I don't vote. Hostile, yes.
And Keeney, yes. Thank you. That is unanimous, everyone. Now we're gonna move on to report of the chair. I will be brief. The only thing that is really, that what I would very much want to bring up tonight is we were anticipating having the town manager here to make the meeting even longer. To go over things related to the TIF, tax and financial financing, which you may have heard about through this handover meetings and other related items. I am, I guess, pleased to report that that issue has been tabled temporarily. I emphasize temporarily. It would not surprise me as an individual if it was back next year. For those who have been going to the Hanover Select Board meetings, I wish to thank Tara, Deb, Kelly and myself for, for being there and chiming in very vocally according to the select board. That, that has, I think in no small part, our presence did change anything. I don't know if they liked that, but it did happen.
It did not.
And, but it did emphasize, I think, the increased need for communication. Like I think Kelly mentioned earlier that we, little we and big we should be talking more to the town of Hanover and probably to the town of Norwich as well for the relevant boards. That communication is here, no surprises. So particularly if you are a board member that is on a town relationship board, broadly defined, please give us probably more detail than you have in the past. I, I would tell the town the same thing. And so if we have something that we're talking about that we feel we should bring it to the town, let's talk about it and, and make it happen. And maybe Jake can help us with the proper form of how to do that if it comes up. In terms of the TIF itself, it's not gonna be discussed at town, at the Hanover Annual Town Meeting. But I think come November, December, let's be especially vigilant to those meeting notes, because that had big ramifications for us if you weren't paying attention to it. Kelly?
Yeah, and I just wanted to, I guess, state publicly that, you know, at the last Hanover Select Board meeting, there, there was some perception, I think, that, you know, we, we were attacking them and that we were accusing them of, you know, not, not caring about the kids. And, and I don't, I don't think that was in our intention at all. So I just wanted to, you know, if that, if that did come across that way, I wanted to say that was, that was not our intention. I don't believe it was their intention to take money away from the kids. I think there were just a lot of unanswered questions and a lot of, you know, un, unclear consequences, the potential consequences that, that we were concerned about. We didn't have a lot of time to formulate a reaction. And so I think it was, you know, the accelerated timeline created a lot of anxiety for those of us on this board and, and just the unknowns. So I, we appreciate, of course, the work that they're doing and understand that they are really in good faith trying to fund the important projects for the downtown. So just wanted to state that publicly.
Take it going. And also in terms of a general update, that the physician of the middle school athletic co-teacher director has been posted. And so that is out there for those who are looking for it. I can send the direct link to someone if anyone wants it or wants, wants to send it to someone. And the administration will keep us abreast of updates on that as it comes.
Fourteen applicants, so fourteen applicants, so that's awesome.
Thanks for that, Tim, I didn't know that. Okay, and then any other comments for me or not, and we'll move on. The committee reports, any Dresden specific committee updates we need to hear about, such as C S D C, I think, and council tuition, tuition we've already heard about.
I, I would just say CPP has been talking a lot about heterogeneous grouping and looking at departments' efforts to figure out how they best fit the portrait of the art, the portrait of the artist. You can tell I'm a retired literature teacher. The portrait of the graduate and the commitment on the part of the school to meeting each student where they are and moving them forward. And so that's generated quite a lot of conversation within departments about what it means to offer courses that are rigorous and how to make sure students make the choices that enable them to be stretched and so it's, it's a really interesting conversation. And that's just sharing it with you.
The finance committee.
Yes, sir.
Which I would very much like for me to be my backup on. If I'm going to stay on the committee, will to be determined. They had a statement on the TIF, which was very much in line with our statement, which we had convened a meeting at the Select Board meeting because we had a forum in case we needed to make that statement and make a last minute decision. We didn't have to because the item was a consideration.
Thank you for that, Terrence.
Can't wait to see what happens next.
Thank you, everyone, for those reports. Move around to the superintendent's report. Jay and then Robin as well.
Sure, I, I'd like to just report that there's some exciting stuff happening in our office with regard to board docs and that board docs is gonna go away. Board docs, they, they have, they're changing their format, changing their structure and changing their price. And Ryan took the initiative to see what other options were out there and found a program called Simbri, which was developed by a school boards association in Georgia, has taken off and is being used by the New Hampshire School Boards Association for housing their policies. And it also has a very robust strategic planning function, which Ryan has already entered all of our stuff in, in terms of board goals, strategies and outcomes. And I will be sharing this and, and providing an initial chance to play with it with our principals next Tuesday evening at our retreat. And we'll use that as a basis for rolling out this new model to the, the board at our retreat. I'll, I'll try to make that brief. So we have plenty of time for those other priorities you've designated, but it's, it really is exciting. It looks better, it's more intuitive. And we're ready to roll it out. So, and we're gonna save money.
Any comments for Jay?
Uh, can I say one more thing?
Okay, go for it.
Uh, just as far as an update on the lawsuit, there's a lot going on. I'm sure probably many of you have been approached by the Dartmouth about, for, for quotes about the lawsuit. I've been referring to, asking the administration to refer those requests to me. Unless the board would rather, would rather take them. And I have to say, I've had, I had one member of the community, I'm not even sure if she was from our community, but she asked why we wouldn't just sign the certification to say that we're not violating Title VI and just didn't understand what I had against the document. But then every other comment I've received by email has been supportive of you for having the courage to make the decision to join the lawsuit. And it's, that, that goes for staff, I've received a number of, of emails from staff, a number from members of the community and even students who, who thanked us for, for standing up. And the hearing, we should, we're hoping that we have a ruling from the judge that heard the injunction request prior to the deadline on the twenty fourth that the feds have set for us to do or die, so. I, I did respond to the deadline that the state had given us for the seventeenth for returning the certification form. I didn't fill it out. I left it blank, aside from the, the box rip of my name and it just said, please see attached and I attached, I, I sent it to you. I sent a statement from our, that our attorneys had helped us with that essentially said that we're waiting for a ruling on this injunction and we'll respond in due course, so. That's where we are. We'll see what happens next.
And I'll turn it in that you guys probably all saw the news article. It has also been picked up by the Boston Globe, the New York Times Center article that alluded to it without naming Hanover. And because this is Hanover, some of the academic articles they referenced in that article are actually some of our parents. In terms of just, there's all the contributions here. And to keep in mind that we do have many parent and Dartmouth content experts that are available for this and many other things that is something we should generally work on, building those relationships as well. Any questions for Jay or questions that are referencing Robyn's detailed notes? See, now we'll move on to Teresa. Teresa, anything we want to chime in on briefly?
Sure. I'm seeing the late hour.
Thank you for seeing that later.
I, I attached the financial documentation, the summary page and everything else. I'm just highlighting where we're at with Dresden for this school year, obviously an odd projection for the end of our school year. As things sit right now, we kind of roughly might be looking at three hundred and twenty-five thousand ninety-seven dollars as unencumbered, unspent expenditures. And then our revenues, as we've, we've earned a lot of interest on a lot of the money we've kept into the New Hampshire pool and only pulled it when we had to. So we've earned quite a bit of interest, so that helps. Where we'll have like a surplus of fifty-three thousand for revenues. Anticipated again, projection is looking at maybe three hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and twenty-four fund balance operational for this year. Given our FY twenty-four fund balance with panage of three eight five eight seventy-eight. So the projected fund balance right now would be about seven hundred and sixty-six thousand four ninety-eight. And again, if we have an offsetting surplus of four hundred, that would leave an unassigned of three sixty-six four ninety-eight. And behind, well, behind for me, but one of the separate documentations is just the breakdown based on function and the schoolwide, then there's the RMS section and the high school section. And then what I've also included is a document that will actually kind of give you, or as you look at, like for an example, school board and superintendent under a schoolwide, you'll see the notes kind of give you highlights about the overages or where we might have had underage. So I have added, included that also. And then March Intensive report, revenues, expenditures and fund to grants.
Any questions for Teresa?
Anything unexpected on the grant front? No, then.
Yeah.
Not yet.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, Teresa. Okay, moving along to the non-public, we do have a need for a non-public. And if I could take a motion that involves items B, D and I, that would be much appreciated. Try, go for it, Jean.
I move to enter into non-public session at ten oh one P M under RSA ninety-one dash A three two B, C and I.
That's second by Deb. Individuals, starting with Neil.
Oh, yes.
Sullivan, yes. McCollum, yes. Dick, yes. Christie, yes. Nelson, yes. Russell, yes. Rosa, yes. Yvonne, yes.
Garrett?
Yes. You guys probably don't need to call me. You guys can handle it, I think.
Okay, guys, we'll, we'll call you, hang tight.
Unless you want to. I'm on my cell phone, driving home. Unless you want to, I'm on my cell phone driving home.
Thank you everyone for sticking around. Now we're back in public session and we will take a motion on the tuition rates. Tara?
I moved to approve the head of our tuition rate of $24,470 and the Richmond middle school rate of $25,911 for the 2025-2026 school year.
Thank you. We have a second? Second by Deb. Any discussion? Right. Seeing now we do have to go individually since Garrett thankfully is still sticking around with us except waiting. All right. So we can do this. We can do this arms up. Right. That is unanimous. Thank you everyone.
With Michael gone.
Michael is gone, yes. Okay. So now we do not have any more publics to address, but we tried. And any agenda topics for the next meeting, please let me know. There are a few things you are going to talk about if you want to take a look. And then I will take a motion, a motion to adjourn the meeting at 10:34.
Oh, I know. I moved to adjourn at 10:34 PM.
Seconded by Lisa individually, starting with Neil.
Neil, yes.
Sullivan, yes. McConnell, yes. Saquon, yes.
Oh, Christie, yes. Stiles, yes. Russell, yes. DeBussa, yes.
And Merritt just left, so teeny.
Right. Thank you everyone. Next meeting is on Tuesday, May 7.